Good afternoon, NAFL Centro. Captain Perkins here. Welcome to our August Virtual Town Hall. We've got a pretty packed agenda today. Lots to discuss. And one of the more intriguing topics toward the end is a bit of a moving target. So lots to watch out for. And what I want you to do is if you've got any questions about anything, shoot it in. We've got a live monitoring team right now to receive questions real time and we'll get those addressed. Otherwise, the agenda for today, we're going to talk, Ms. Wanda Valencia is going to talk Sexual Assault Prevention and Response Program Overview. We're going to have an Emergency Management Program Overview with some specifics about the closing out the summer. We're going to have a review of Exercise Citadel Rumble with our Integrated Training Officer. Our Public Affairs Officer is going to update on what's going on out in town around us and things that may be of interest as towns continue to work their way through COVID on opening up. And then I'll give you a quick update on Lincoln Military Housing, on one change that's coming. And then we're going to spend some time talking about decoupling of services. And what that really means is opening up some facilities that we've been working on for some time, specifically the gym, the pool, food and beverage, getting a few of those things available first to active duty and eventually to larger groups. So that's kind of what we've got on the plate for today. And XO is going to close us out with welcoming some new members to our NAPEC family, quite a bit of turnover this summer. So that's today's agenda. Joining us virtually is Ms. Wanda Valencia. She is off-site right now and she is our Sexual Assault Program Response Program Manager and our SARC. And she's joining us virtually. So Wanda, I'm going to bring you onto the screen now. And please, thanks for joining us today. And over to you, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Wanda Valencia and I am the NAFL Centro's Installation Sexual Assault Response Coordinator, or SARC for short. Now, my presentation today is going to touch on three very important areas. The definition and categories of sexual assault, the roles and common terms used in our program, reporting options, and the differences for both military and civilians. So the first thing I want to do is I want to tell you about the definition of sexual assault as defined by the DOD. It says intentional sexual contact characterized by the use of force, threats, intimidation, or abuse of authority, or when the victim does not or cannot consent. Now, this includes a broad category of offenses, both penetration and contact-type offenses. Now, one of the things that I did is I contacted our JAG officer and she has allowed me to use this very simple analogy for you as a quick guide to kind of help you understand what areas of the body is covered that sexual assault refers to. So it refers to touching, whether it's inside or outside of the clothing, in those private areas that would ordinarily be covered up by swim trunks or bathing suit. So if someone touches you in those areas, it could be someone grabs your butt. So that covers the area of sexual assault. Okay, the next thing I want to address is the roles and common acronyms used in our program. So the first thing is SAPR. So that stands for the Sexual Assault Prevention and Response Program. So basically, we provide training and education on one part of our program. That's what we do. We help to prevent sexual assaults from happening. But then we also have the part of our program where we respond to a sexual assault if it occurs. Now, that's SAPR. The next is SARC. So I've already explained that my title is the Sexual Assault Response Coordinator. And I am what's considered the subject matter expert for the program. And I also supervise victim advocates. And I also supervise the SAPR Point of Contact, or SAPR POC for short. Then we have victim advocates. So victim advocates, they're also known, sometimes people use the terms interchangeably. They may say SAPR VA. They may say Unit Victim Advocates, or UVAs. Now, their job is to maintain our installations 24/7 response line phone. So they man that 24/7. They explain reporting options to victims and they make sure that that victim's needs are getting met. That's one of the only individuals in our program who, that's their sole duty, is taking care of that victim and making sure that their needs are met. The next thing I want to talk to you about is SAPR POC, so SAPR Point of Contact. For our UICs there at NAFL Centro, NC-1 Wooford is our SAPR POC. Now, he is not a victim advocate. He does not have the same confidentiality that we have. He did not attend the same training that we have. So it's really important that he does not have contact with victims whatsoever. So this is not the person that you want to go to if you've been sexually assaulted. You want to go to either myself or one of the victim advocates. Now, the SAPR POC's role, just to name a few, his duties are to conduct SAPR training. He ensures that the command inspection binder is up to date, along with, it contains policy information, credentialing information for the advocates, et cetera. So that's what he does. Then we have another term you might hear is NCIS. That stands for the Naval Criminal Investigative Service. And they are the only ones who are to be investigating a sexual assault. Then we have SAEN, Sexual Assault Nurse Examiners. They are the ones who would, if the victim chooses, would perform the forensic exams. And it's called a SAFE exam, or Sexual Assault Forensic Exam. Another term you might hear is VLC. That's V as in Victor, VLC, Victims' Legal Counsel. That's a very valuable resource that many people don't know about, but that's a free attorney that victims can speak to regarding their case. Now, the next thing I want to talk to you about is regarding reporting options and the differences for both military and civilians. So for active-duty members and their dependents, there is what's called a restricted report. And that's where you are saying, "Wanda, I don't want anyone in my chain of command, law enforcement, anyone to know that I'm a victim of sexual assault. Just give me the resources that I need, et cetera, but don't tell my chain of command. Don't tell law enforcement that I'm a victim of sexual assault." So the only notification that I make to commanders are, "Sir, there's been a restricted report." That's it. So they don't get to know the person's name. They don't get to know if the person is male or female, nothing. So that is for active-duty members and their dependents age 18 and over. That is considered a restricted report. Okay, now with our DOD civilians, so those who are not military dependents at all, you just work for the military, the equivalent of you making a restricted report would simply be that you seek confidential care from myself, victim advocate, without telling your supervisor, without telling Human Resources, without telling law enforcement or the command. So that is your equivalent to filing a restricted report. So I do want to also caution everyone that, please, if you don't want law enforcement or command to know about it, please don't tell people like your lead petty officer, your chief, a CDO, watch standard, or anyone like that. Because they are told that once they receive that information and they know that someone's been sexually assaulted, they notify the command. So they don't have the same confidentiality that I have, that the victim advocates have. Now, other safe people that you can talk to besides, if you want a restricted report, other safe people that you can talk to are the victim advocate, as I mentioned, myself, the SARC. You can also speak to a counselor. You have a great counselor there at NAFL Centro, Mr. Stephen Petty. You can also go to our installation clinic, medical, and speak to them and still maintain a restricted report. Now, for civilians, we would have to refer you out to someone medical, to get your medical services out in town. And that gets a little bit more tricky because they have various notifications that they need to make. So it's important to just call us and we will help walk you through that process. So the next, so we've talked about restricted reporting. The next I want to talk to you about unrestricted reporting. So that's basically the very opposite, where you're saying, "Wanda, you know what? I've been sexually assaulted and I want the law enforcement and command to know about this sexual assault." So for active-duty and their dependents age 18 and up, if you want an unrestricted report, where you want the chain of command to know about your sexual assault, you want law enforcement to know about it and to start an investigation, you just basically would let them know that you want an unrestricted report and let us know that you want an unrestricted report. And there will be an investigation that occurs. And it's not that everybody will know about your sexual assault, just those with a need to know. Now, for, so I've talked about unrestricted reporting, I've talked about active-duty and their dependents age 18 and up. So now I want to tell you the difference for civilians, DOD civilians who want a unrestricted report. So you can make an unrestricted report simply by notifying your supervisor, notifying Human Resources, law enforcement, or the command that you have been a victim of sexual assault and so that that, so that there can be an investigation. So I've told you the differences between restricted and unrestricted reporting. And I want to let you know that this SAPR program was designed for service members and their dependents age 18 and up, and that there are different options and resources for both civilians and our active-duty members. Now, for confidential resources that are available for the active-duty and their dependents, you can have assistance from a SARC, victim advocate, counselor, chaplain, military medical assistance. You can also get assistance from the DOD SAFE helpline and legal assistance, the victim legal counsel that I mentioned. Now, for the all DOD and civilians, you can have assistance from a SARC, a victim advocate, and we will make sure that you get that, just that crisis assistance to assist you. And then we will refer you to someone out in the community that can help you long-term. And then we have the, another great resource for civilians is the Civilian Employee Assistance Program, where you can receive civilian counseling. They'll provide you with several sessions that you can go to. That's free for us being a Department of Navy employee. You can also receive assistance from the Rape Crisis Center out in town and the civilian medical out in town, as well as the DOD SAFE helpline. So I've given you a lot of information today. I do want to let you know that you should all be receiving this information that I've talked about will be given to you. It should have been distributed today, so everyone will have that. I will make my, tell you some quick phone numbers just in case you have any questions for me, especially things that you may not want to disclose over the air. Right now, if you want to give me a call privately, my phone number is 760-540-1053. I'd also like to leave you with the 24/7 response line number that is manned by our, by unit victim advocates who have that confidentiality. Their phone number, that phone number is 760-644-2913. And a great resource I always like to leave with everyone is the DOD SAFE helpline manned by very good professionals. That phone number is 877-992-5247. Thank you all for your attention and I'll open it up to see if we have any questions at this time.
Thank you, Wanda. So a lot of great information that Wanda put out. You know, it's very important to know who to talk to when you're making a restricted report, a different person or different part of the chain of command if you want to make an unrestricted report. And that material will be clearly articulated in the reference material that Wanda mentioned. From my perspective, there's, prevention is where I want to put as much of our effort as we can. If we can get ahead of a problem by fostering a command climate that keeps that continuum of harm down in the green, where we're not being conducive to harassing behavior and try and get ahead of it before it happens, that's where I want to be. And then if we find ourselves in the unfortunate situation where we are in response mode, we've got the team of support experts there doing that and Wanda's gone through the resources. When we get into response, my number-one priority, and Wanda's as well, is support to the victim. So we're going to go through that with, every step we take will be appropriately supporting the victim's needs at that time and we'll walk our way through that. And the differences in DOD versus civilian versus military, slightly different program terms, but the processes are kind of the same. You just have to, you go to different people for the appropriate help there. Any questions pop in while we're doing that, XO? Okay, nothing popped in, Wanda? Any closing comments?
No, I'm good to go. Thank you all so much for your attention.
Okay, thank you very much. Great to see you virtually and we're looking forward to seeing you again.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so I'm going to go ahead and reset back over here. And next up, we've got Mr. Al Davis, our Emergency Management Officer. Come on in, Al, and he's going to talk about a couple of things from the emergency management point of view. Good to see you again, sir.
Yes, sir.
How are you doing?
Good.
Good. So, over to you. I know it's wildfire season. You got anything that's important for the folks to know about what's going on wildfire in the region and then more locally?
Within the region, we have some wildfires at Riverside, California area there. We've got several bases that responded there and I saw some Navy vehicles there. Today, I really want to talk about emergency alerting notifications, what we typically call ADHOC. Hello, NAFL Centro. Good afternoon. Like I said, we're going to talk about ADHOC. Some folks call it WAIN system, which ADHOC is a part of the WAIN system. The WAIN stands for Wide Area Network. And what we use ADHOC for is to notify, notify you of emergency conditions situations. These situations can range from fires, accidents, extreme weather, to criminal acts such as active shooters. The majority of emergency situations, with the exception of hurricanes, typhoons, and slow-moving storms, require immediate notification to get the maximum benefit of early warning. Recently, we have ADHOC, we've used ADHOC for work-related notifications in this current season of COVID-19, which has been very helpful. There is a Navy requirement for all military, active-duty, and reserve, civil service, contractor personnel, with an MMCIU's account to register their official work phone numbers, official work email addresses into ADHOC. However, we strongly encourage you to include your personal cell phones, personal email accounts within the system also, because emergencies do not always occur only during working hours. The registration of your cell phones and text messaging allows for real-time alerts. The main purpose of immediate notification is to assist you and your family during emergency disasters. Time is of essence. A quick example is the recent hurricane Isaiah's, which occurred on East Coast last weekend. As the storm approached the East Coast, the storm was downgraded to a tropical storm. But during the evening hours, the storm strengthened to a Category 1 hurricane and altered its path. Because of this change, lives were lost. Just maybe, if those folks had been notified of the storm's increased strength and changed the directions, could they have changed the outcome? Bottom line up front, the Navy can't alert you if we can't find you. Procedures for adding and updating your information in ADHOC can be found in our Ready Navy website at www.redy.navy.mil or contact our Emergency Manager, Al Davis. And my phone number is 760-339-2651 or my cellular number is 760-573-9788.
Thanks, Mr. Davis. So we'll publish those numbers and the procedures through your chain of command to sign up for AT-HOC as well. And the next brief we're going to get about Citadel Rumble, one of the things we're going to do is evaluate the distribution list to make sure that it not only is current, but that the folks are getting the right information, that the process is actually working. So we're going to do an end-to-end test and make sure. In addition to emergencies that Mr. Davis covered, we also use the AT-HOC system for notification of somewhat routine, but maybe not related to an emergency or crisis, about a change in policy or maybe some weather conditions that may be affecting the base operations for the day. So it's more than just anti-terrorism notifications or emergency changes to the base. So we want to get as many people signed up to that as possible and you can feel confident. Can you talk a little bit about how folks' personal information is protected through that network? How do we safeguard that we're not letting that out in the wild and not getting that open? Do we have a policy for that?
Yes, sir, correct. The numbers are only stored within the system and the system is not releaseable to anyone. Even when we run our rosters, phone numbers are not printed out on the rosters, only the names of the persons and spaces to update the information if necessary.
Okay, good. Okay, so thanks very much for that. We're going to be reaching out to all of you to see if the system's working. And I would implore you to put, as Mr. Davis recommended, your personal contact numbers and email as well, just to broaden the opportunity that that notification will get to you in the time that it's meant to.
Yes, sir.
Anything else on your plate, sir?
No, it's quite a bit on the plate, sir.
Yeah, there's a lot going on right now. You're right.
That's all for today.
Okay, thanks, Al.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about the ADHOC system.
Okay, super. Thanks. All right, next on the agenda, we've got our Integrated Training Officer, Mr. Manny Peralta. He's going to talk about exercise Citadel Rumble, which we're going to be doing next week. It's an annual exercise. And while he's doing his COVID precautions and cleaning between users here, I'm just giving you a quick update on what Citadel Rumble is. So Manny, welcome. And I'm going to stay six feet away from you and keep my mask off so folks can see me and hear me. But over to you. Let's talk a little bit about what is Citadel Rumble, what are we trying to achieve?
Yes, sir. So hello, everybody. I'm Manny Peralta. I'm the Installation Training Officer and I'm here to give you a quick overview on Citadel Rumble. So what is Citadel Rumble? Citadel Rumble is an exercise, it's actually an annual recurring exercise enterprise-wide that is designed to test installations readiness for emergencies against natural disasters. For the most part, on our region, it is for earthquakes. So who's involved? Typically, these exercises involve all the installation. However, because of COVID this year, basically, the only people that are going to be involved are those that are involved in the emergency operation center.
Crisis act contains. And then, management.
How does this apply to me? Well, for the most part, earthquake preparedness. Family should have a certain, certain preparedness for your family. If an earthquake hit at this moment, are you prepared right now? Are your children trained on how to hide and prepare themselves? Since everybody's at home, are your children trained on what to do at home if an earthquake were to really hit? If an earthquake were to hit now, do you have water? Do you have food? Do you have a plan for your dog ones, for your pets? So these are the types of things that you want to take a look at, take a few minutes to make sure that your emergency preparedness is good in your own home, just as the installation is required to be. Mr. Al already hit on ADHOC, so I just won't push too much on it. But just make sure that if you're not involved in ADHOC or you're not registered, that you reach out to register yourself, because that is how the installation gives the messages for emergencies out to the population. And last but not least, you know, train yourself to listen to the giant voice. When you hear the giant voice, be, you know, just bend the mirror, listen to the window and see.
You're actually paying, because you never know if that message coming out of the giant voice is actually going to be just an exercise. Other than that, it's good.
Okay, thanks very much. So this year's Citadel Rumble, we're doing as a tabletop exercise. I talked to the tenant leadership last week about what we're asking for them. So not a lot of impact in most of the base, but we're going to go through some of the, make sure we're ready, we got our procedures right, and we're ready for the next. So thanks very much for the video.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. All right, I see you guys giving me the hand wave signal. Are we having a sound issue? Okay, what do we need to do?
We're, one second.
Okay, if we need to pause and restart, we can do that.
Okay. According to our Facebook audience, it's that. Hope folks get that, yeah. So we're going to pause for five minutes and reset.
Okay, yeah, we'll reset. We had a phone cavity, so just give us a few minutes and we'll be right back with you. Okay, thanks, everyone. I think we're back online now. How's the mic sounding now, XO? These are the things we learn as we do these live sessions during COVID. So we're continuing to work on our processes and we'd love to have some more equipment. Not so good. Okay, we're going to try one more thing. Be right back with you. Okay, I got one CO suggestion box item to review. There was a comment made about somebody observed some folks using the gym facilities recently and there was concern about some folk getting access to facilities that are barred from others. Mr. Shouten and I, and now I'm the OR Director, and I are going to talk about uncoupling and opening up some of these facilities. But what I think that individual observed was our security team actually doing their Security Force Academy. They were using a facility for official mission purposes and training and certification of our new security team. Nothing's open right now that folks are allowed to use and services are not being withheld from other folks on the base. So I can allay your fears for that. And we've got a very detailed roadmap to walk you through shortly on getting things back open. So that's what I've got. I promised you that I would come back with CO suggestion box items as they come in. And that's the only one that's come in this last month. Okay, thanks for the update on Emergency Management and Citadel Rumble. If you weren't able to hear the Citadel Rumble piece, a very brief recap, we're doing a tabletop exercise next week, not a full-scale drill or a base-wide event, to review our procedures to respond in the event of an earthquake. And what I'm asking for all of you is to make sure that your personal recall is up to date, that your command knows how to get in touch with you, that you're tied into that AT-HOC system that Mr. Davis discussed and mentioned, and then others that are going to be participating in that exercise have been notified on additional requirements. So that's it for the majority of you. Okay, so coming up next, I'm going to give you a quick update on what's going on in Lincoln Housing, because PAO just stepped out. So we'll switch the agenda. So Lincoln Military Housing and I, we're very closely aligned with bringing things back online. So two things that are coming and the residents should be getting notified today about the splash zone and the outdoor fitness areas is what I'm calling them. Most people call them playgrounds. Those are good to go. So we're in a condition on the base where I've given approval for Lincoln to open those back up. So they are going through their training, their workforce, and their safety procedures and whatnot. And notification to the residents is going out very soon. So you should see the splash zone and the playgrounds coming back open. Now, those are going to be kind of using your own risk. There's no dedicated cleaning required by the CDC because they're outdoor, they're getting pummeled by UV sunlight every single day. The one thing I'm going to ask of you, and Lincoln's going to cover this as well, is we want to minimize the contact between households. So in order to keep our physical distancing, I don't want groups of children playing together from multiple households, just to minimize that sideways, lateral transmission. So we'll get those things back open as fast as we can and that should be coming out very shortly. Other than that, Mr. Chris, are you ready for a public affairs update on what's going on?
Absolutely, Skipper and Matt.
Absolutely, Skipper, and mathologies.
Not at all. We got a lot of bowling balls in the air today. And I appreciate all that Blue Depth Productions is doing with all the videos we've done today.
Oh, yeah. Blue Depth Productions is extremely busy. And I know you're going to talk about that later on in the video, about some of the things you had mentioned to decoupling. And I wanted to say earlier, when you mentioned we had the technical problems, we just need a different dongle. I'm convinced in the 21st century, all problems can be fixed with the correct dongle. So we'll work on that.
Yeah, it used to be adapter, this year it's dongle.
Exactly. How things have changed. Okay, so we do have some things going on in the community. Big thing coming up is 9/11. And right now, to my knowledge, there's nothing going on with the 9/11 staircase or stair climb that we traditionally are a part of. However, we are planning something for, on the base, more information to follow on that one. CMC and I are working on something. And we'll have that over to you here shortly, sir, for your approval, and then we'll get word on that up to the public.
Yeah, that'll be a small event, more to follow, but it's not going to be the large group and interaction with the local community that we normally do due to COVID this year.
And September, towards the end of September, we're going to have Bells Across America again. And I'll work with Mr. Curtis on that one. And this year, we may livestream that one because it is important for us to remember our fallen shipmates that have, you know, that are no longer with us this year.
And if I recall, that's going to be a virtual blend as well.
Yes, sir. Traditionally, we've done it in the past. It'll be more virtual this year. Mr. Curtis and I are going to put our heads together, see what we can't do to commemorate that occasion appropriately.
Okay, super.
And out in town, so it's summertime and getting close to school time. But I want to remind you that for the local cities around here, their public libraries have phenomenal programs. And so if you go to the website for the City of Imperial and the City of El Centro, you can find out what summer programs are currently going on. I know, for example, that the City of Imperial has curbside service. And you can check out books that way. They also have activity packs for the kids. So parents, I would strongly suggest that you go to those two cities, their websites. Look at the different opportunities that they have for citizens and see if something is, you know, appropriate for you and your family. I also want to remind everyone that they need to complete the census. You are here in California this year, whether or not you're a citizen of California. You may be a citizen of Florida or something else like that, but you are physically here in California this year. So you do need to fill out the census, and that can be done online as well.
When is that close? It's pretty soon.
Very soon, sir. Yeah, it's getting very close.
So if you haven't done your census, get on that.
Do it today. Just set a Siri reminder and say, go take the census. It really only takes you less than five minutes. It's a very simple form. I did it a few weeks ago. And it's really important for our local community because we're a transient population out here. That's what gives them the federal funds that allows them to do public programs that will benefit our families out here. It's similar to the way the local school systems get federal funds for our students when we complete the appropriate paperwork for that. So it's very important for our military families to take that census in order to help out the local community here. They do so much for us. We need to certainly do our part to support them.
And many of us are residents of the local community. So if you've lived overseas and you've had the pleasure of filling out an overseas housing allowance survey or one of the other surveys that stimulate how much money the overseas bases get, this is kind of the same thing where it feeds into helping ourselves.
Absolutely. Yeah, we definitely don't want to be undercounted here in the state because that means a loss of money. And, you know, we need to help out our local community because they really do do so much to support the base and its mission. And then on a public health note, everybody is encouraged to go get tested, which is free. You know, don't even have to use your TRICARE benefits and all that. The Imperial County Public Health Department on their website has a way that you can sign up for free testing in Imperial, which is Tuesdays and Saturdays, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM through a company called Optum Search. So that's definitely, you know, free. It's a benefit. If you don't know, it's really a short process. You go in, like you've made your appointment, you check in, they test you, and then you get the results a short time later. And I think it's, right now, it would be a really good peace of mind for people. Go get the test, find out where you're at. Because, you know, we really need to work together to keep us safe, to keep the community safe, to keep our base safe. Why not take advantage of something that's free?
Yeah, and that's a good point. It's also important that Doc Ronnie, our Public Health Emergency Officer, feeds testing into the overall assessment of an individual's situation. And when I make a decision on return to work or what status someone's going to be in for a strict movement following travel or whatnot, testing is a part of the process. It's not the all, it's not the all answer for everything. So it's just a piece of the puzzle. But that's available if you choose to do that.
And then I've got one more thing I want to let people know about. And that's the Imperial Valley Business Recovery Task Force. That's an organization that was put together to let people know what shops are open and what's going on out in the community, especially with respect to shopping. Where can you go? Where can't you go? What's open? What's not open? What's opening? What protections are they taking? And if you own a business, you know, you want to be a part of that. So for our families here on the base, I really hope you go to the Imperial Valley Business Recovery Task Force. Just Google it. It'll come up for you really quick. And it's got a ton of information for you so that if you are looking for a local business to support, you can find out what's here in the valley, what's open, and what's going on with them.
Now, I appreciate the discussion on all those topics. Chris Hall, best PAO in the region. Whoop, thanks, sir.
All right, sir. And I'll get back behind the camera before I ask questions.
I think I saw Dennis waiting outside. So we're going to spend some time talking about decoupling and opening up of services, like I mentioned. Come on in, Dennis. We're ready to go. Got our distancing. Chris did a wipe down as he got out of the seat. So Dennis and I spent quite a bit of time together today as we've been, as well as the PAO, as we've filmed a bunch of training videos on opening up services. So you may have seen the barber shop, the AEX Barber opened last week for active duty only. There's a video sent out linked to active duty on the base, what the procedures are for doing that. A little bit different than normal in order to protect ourselves during COVID. I got some good feedback on that. So we're doing the same thing for the services that I've got authority to open up now, which are the gym, fitness centers, which include the gym and the aquatics, meaning the pools. And then some of our food and beverage and single sailor program. So there's a plan that Dennis and I talked to you about, what's coming online first, what user groups are going to be authorized to do that, and then what kind of special things you need to watch out for, and then how to unit those reservations. So I'm going to start with why is it okay for the base to open up? Why am I making this decision now? And then Dennis, talk to you about the specifics for each of the areas. So we've done a really good job dealing with COVID. I think everyone on the base has done what I've asked, which is do those individual health protection measures and provide self-discipline and willpower to get that done every single day. So wearing a mask when you're within six feet, being cognizant of when you take a mask off, like we're further apart and we're not spraying on each other. So avoiding the close contact without protection. Cleaning of high-contact surfaces, cleaning of your hands and things like that. All that's working. We've got no active cases on the base right now. And even going back months, when we did have a couple of cases, there was no transmission laterally inside the base here. There was some contact out in town. All that tracing is where we've been able to determine that all the cases that we had originated from contact out in town. And it didn't get inside the fence line and then continue to spread. So that allows me to assert that we're pretty clean. We got a good bubble here. And it's safe and appropriate to slowly open things up to folks. So we're going to start with active duty only, and then that'll be user group Alpha. And then user group Bravo. I'll expand that to residents of the base because again, I can control that environment a little easier than I can control the environment out in town. And then when appropriate, much further downrange, we'll open it up to normal users of the facilities. So that's kind of a why. Dennis, let's talk about the how. So let's pick whichever one you want to go first, and we'll talk about how did I get a reservation? How do I get into the program? What do I need to do before I show up? And then what can I expect when I get there?
Perfect. All right, thanks, Skipper. So what we're targeting, we're targeting Monday, 17 August for opening date for Fitness, the Large Pool and Single Sailor Facility. So the question is, how do we get there from here? So today, three training videos, demonstration videos have been made. And they'll be available on YouTube next week. Everybody will be asked to view those videos, especially the one that you're interested in, let's say, Fitness. So for this video example, we use Fitness throughout the video as an example. So you watch the video for Fitness, and that talks about the check-in process, the policy rules in that particular facility, the equipment use, and the disinfecting policy procedures. So the burning question for everybody is, okay, how do I make a reservation? So the easiest way is, next week, you're going to see emails coming out with facility information. And at the bottom of every single advertisement, there's a little squiggly box called a QR code, Quick Reference Code. Let's stop that code because it is really easy to use. I'm by far older than any sailor on base. I used it. It's so easy. And they're facility-specific. So make sure, if you're interested in Fitness, make sure, and right below every QR code, it'll say what facility it's linked to. Will be the Fitness, Large Pool, or Single Sailor Facility. I'll get back to this sheet in a bit. So let's say you get to the reservation page. There's four easy steps. The first step is put the date and time that you're interested in reserving. The second step is your name and command. And we need that, one, for your reservation. Number two, hopefully, we never have to check that if anybody tests positive for COVID, that we can check, backtrack on who missed the facility. The third step is back to the training video. There's going to be a little box that you need to check yes on that you watched the videos. If you don't check that box, you can't proceed further on the reservation confirmation. So you check yes. You get to the confirmation page. And after you review it, make sure it's all correct. You need to either print the page, take a screenshot, or save it to your phone because you'll need to bring it to your appointment time. So what to expect at the door? So let's say today is your reservation date and time for 1500 today. So what do you expect at the door at the fitness center? Well, there's four things. ID check, and that's simply your cat. Make sure you bring your cat card. Second one is your reservation sheet. I want to just tell you to either print out or save to your phone. Bring that. The next is a health screening questionnaire. And those are the four questions that you should, every morning, you ask yourself. And you'll be asked those at the facilities. And the third one is a temperature check with a digital thermometer. We realize it's hot outside. So get to your appointment a little bit early, cool off, cool down. You'll be afforded a couple tries if you pop 100 or above. And if you do, just go back in line, cool off, find some shade, cool off. Going to the basketball court for the fitness center, that's going to be the queue-up area, and cool off and then try it again. If it happens again, you're more likely to be asked to make a reservation for another day. So again, staying on Fitness, what to expect from the fitness center. So you'll see all these on big boards, much larger than the sheet bigger than I have right here. But I want to show it to you. These are the policies. Please take the time to read and understand them, ask questions if you have any questions. But it's totally different than pre-COVID. For example, going to the fitness center, you need to arrive in your workout gear. Don't come in street clothes and expect to change because the locker rooms are closed. They're out of gas. Bring the workout towel. There is no towel service. Bring the water bottle because the drinking fountains or scuba boats are secure. Those are just some of the examples that are on the policy and rules.
Yeah, what we've done is we've kind of secured those things that are higher risk of lateral contact transmission. So we're asking your support to adapt those procedures. We're going to take those off the table. And then you can just get right after what you're after, right at the gym.
So again, let's stop that QR code at the bottom of the page. I would like for that. So you're in the fitness center and going back to the reservation page. Make a reservation for the free weight area or the cardio area. So let's say you're going into the free weight area. You will still be required to use your mask, wear your mask, and use it in the free weight area. If you're under cardio machines, you are able to de-mask while you're working out and only while you're working out. And as soon as you're done, re-mask and then disinfect the equipment. All the patrons will be required to disinfect the machines with provided disinfectant cloth before and after use. Then during the course of operations, we've built in two-hour blocks to deep clean of everything under the roof in the fitness center or the large pool or in the single sailor facility to clean that facility to near-hospital-grade clean.
Does that mean the patrons don't have to clean the machines when they're done using it?
No, they have to clean the machines. Before and after. And if you're jumping on a machine right after somebody else, you still need to clean it before you jump on and use it. And then again, when you're done cleaning it. And that's for everybody's protection, both patron and the staff.
Yeah, absolutely.
So like I said, the target opening date is Monday, 17 August. So down the road, we'll keep that posture for a little bit. We're taking this slow and safe for everybody's health. But down the road, the plan is to reopen the family pool and take pot when COVID conditions warrant and with approval from the commanding officer.
Okay, so just like Dennis said, when you get there, it's going to be a little different than the last time you used the gym or the pool. So watch the videos so it'll just help you understand how it's going to work when you get there. Read the guideline sheets. We've got one for the pool, one for the gym, one for the single sailor program, a little bit different. And then just follow those rules. And the bottom line is, we're opening it up for us all for the mental health and resilience of all of us. But if the patrons are fighting with the staff about wearing masks or I want to use this machine, but it's not available today because it's out of the rotation, we're not going to deal with any of that. And if it's just not working, the only recourse I have to protect everybody is closing back down. So I ask you to follow the rules that have been outlined, be good neighbors. Don't sign up seven days in a row. So the application, I believe, comes open, what, seven days in advance?
Yes, sir. You can make, again, let's use Fitness as an example. So you can make reservations seven days out. And we ask people not to make more than four reservations in that seven-day period. That's to give everybody a chance to use the facility. And we use the same philosophy in three times for single sailor. So and that's just out of courtesy for everybody.
Right. We're all in this together, and we're operating at reduced capacity. So the gym is below 25% what it normally can fit in there, right? So I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to use that and not abusing the fact that you can be the first one awake and log in and get all the appointments. Allows everybody to use it, especially when we're able to open it up to families. We want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to do that. So I appreciate everyone's patience and compliance with that. We're going to go slow. We're going to go deliberate. We're not going to take the next step until it's safe to do that. You might see different facilities have different user groups authorized. So I may get to user group Bravo, which is base residents, family, DOD civilians who live on base faster in the pool than they do in the gym. And that's okay. That's kind of how I anticipate this working out. And we're going, again, we're going to do that protecting the patrons, protecting the staff who's working there. And we're going to take it slow as we go through this. So I just ask you all to be good neighbors and be good family members as we work through this together.
One last thing, Skipper. I just want to go through some of the hours. They're pretty decent hours for these facilities, and we can expand. We want to start slow and call first. We're not going to run. So for Fitness, Monday through Friday, from 06:00 to 19:30. For Large Pool, Monday through Friday, two different groups or blocks, 1100 to 1300, and then again, 16 to 1930. And for Single Sailor, seven days a week from 09:00 to 2000. Those are some wide-open hours.
Okay, good. And we're going to make sure that gets provided in case you didn't get that just now. It's going to change week to week. As I'm watching the medical environment out in town, as I'm watching the medical environment on base, as I'm watching how each of these facilities are operating, Doc and I are going to do spot checks throughout the week to ensure the staff is complying, to ensure the patrons are complying. And if I don't like what I see, I've only got one real option. And we talked about that. So we will provide an update every Friday afternoon to your change of command on what the changes are for the next week as we work things through. And so that's how you'll be getting informed. And so just stay in touch. We'll post things out on which site can folks find out the latest.
The Navy Life SW, and we'll be sending out emails to all of us.
Okay, so we'll do through the email system. Okay, well, thanks very much. Your team's done a phenomenal job. Doc and I have spent many hours this week training the workforce, talking with them about expectations. And I know your team's doing a phenomenal job getting ready. I got a chance to swim a few laps today under close supervision to make sure I was doing it correctly and get that pool opened up as soon as we can. So thanks for your team's hard work. Thank you for your team's hard work.
Love you, sir.
All right. Uh, any questions pop in while we were, uh, no, nothing? Quiet group today. Okay, so, uh, um, thanks very much, Dennis, uh, I'm gonna bring that CO in, and we're gonna talk about a few new folks who've arrived to the staff. So, uh, the facilities we've opened up are, are the ones that I can manage the risk. We're holding off on the ones where the risk is a little bit higher. So the theater, uh, Sundown and Mirage Club, those large gathering-type places, uh, those are quite a bit downrange, and they're not anything near term, so if anyone had any questions about that, they're not currently planned, uh, or I don't have a timeline for any of those. Okay, so, good to see you again.
Yeah, absolutely, Skipper. Uh, good afternoon, everybody. So when the COVID first kicked off, uh, there in, uh, early March, uh, the Department of Defense was pretty quick on, on shutting off, uh, any PCS travel orders. The waiver process of, um, to get around that has slowly been, uh, been coming online, and we're starting to process a lot more waivers, we're sp- we're starting to process a lot more people outbound from the Pearl of the Desert, and also new faces inbound, which is always a good thing. Uh, you'll see, as you're coming in and out of the front gate, we're starting to get some new faces there at Post 1, the ECP for some master-at-arms. But I wanna highlight, uh, three notables. Uh, we've got our new, uh, Public Works Officer, Lieutenant Commander Derek Hall, you'll see him around the, uh, facility. We've got a new Security Officer, Ensign John Kelly, uh, checking onboard, and then here in 214 Headquarters, we have a new Administration Officer, Ms. Gen- Amelia Gendresina. Uh, so when you see those people, uh, give them a warm welcome to the Pearl of the Desert.
Yeah, so small, small staff out here, as y'all know, uh, so every individual that leaves is, uh, is, is sorely missed, until their relief gets onboard and gets up to speed.